Thank you, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July 28th of 2020. And with us today, we have KMAQ, we have Kelly from the newspaper. Luanne, our executive assistant is in the background, and Lisa Smith, our county auditor is here. Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, and myself, Mike Sinis, are your county supervisors. And first on our agenda today is Mike Clausen from our engineers office. Morning, Mike.
Good morning. One thing I have today is a letter to the Board descend to DOT requesting a local road safety plan program to area stated for we go around and check our roads and make recommendations.
It's unfortunate we can't do that.
Well, hopefully they can maybe reinstate something and we can move on and maybe get something out of that program. Yeah, I think that's it. Are you guys okay with the draft letter?
There's a couple grammar corrections and stuff.
Yeah.
A motion and a second to approve the draft letter to the Iowa Department of Transportation for the local road safety plan. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Luanne is very good at catching grammar.
I talked to Todd briefly. Any updates on the, he said that our damage for the bridge or maybe waiting on IIW to get us some information?
Yeah, I talked to Nate Miller with IIW last Friday, and he was going to talk, talk to Todd and send out a letter with his findings. He's thinking it's going to be rather expensive.
That's right.
To revise to repair that. Be pretty tricky to do.
Yeah. And when he gets everything, the way Todd said, when he gets everything put together, he's try to avoid sticker shock to them guys. Well, it's not, it's not a common fix, you know.
Right, right. He said the upstream side, the upright could be heated and bent back into place, but you have to be careful when how you heat it and how it's cool. It's you don't change.
Take your temper out.
For temporary metal. The other side, he said, would have to be replaced. At least three quarters of it would have to be replaced. And it's actually picked it back up just a little bit on the downstream side when it got cold. So you have to support, you put a temporary on the supported so you can remove that piece and then put a new piece in.
Very unfortunate.
Amen.
And we're, he said, we'll have to lower the weight limit on it, but he's got these regulations on.
So it's at 1910 now?
It's at 19 right now.
So that eliminates any semi-traffic.
Yeah.
What about Colin Green? Are they going to give out them?
No, there's a weight limit on it.
They have to buy by the weight limit.
There's both of them.
That's why we have all vehicles on that weight limit side.
So how long?
Make people really happy.
Yeah.
It wasn't even, it wasn't legal to go across it empty, basically. You'd have, well, you probably could be empty on some of them.
Aluminum trailers and.
Right.
How much rate is it in school?
No, 10? Well, no, 10,000.
Yeah.
Trying to think what my little dump up was. It was, it was 10,000 empty. So school bus would be at least 10.
Maybe 12.
12. So that's six ton, seven, eight. It'd be okay if it's still at 10.
Yeah.
Must have borrowed each.
Depends off, it's full or empty.
Yeah, I would think so too. A lot of different stuff. Okay, we appreciate the update on that and we'll work toward a agreement, I suppose, or whatever we can do there.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Is Andy in the hallway? Does anybody know?
Is he on Zoom?
I didn't see him. Oh, let me look.
I don't see him on Zoom yet.
And discussion, so Frank Ellins is also on, from Public, MacCoke to Public Works. And it's regarding our easement that we gave to them regarding the little, where the stoplight is out here. So all we have to do is approve the easement as it was presented, and they took out the 50 year that you had in there that you didn't like. Do we have that easement here, Luanne? Yeah.
Should be.
Okay.
I'm ready to sign anyway.
So all we really need is approval for signature.
The easement for the street safety and traffic control easement.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second to approve the streetscape and traffic control easement and for the board to sign. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Is ATV club or Steve Schrader?
I saw him.
I think they're going to have to present themselves. We'll see how many we got here. How many do you have, Steve?
Well, there's supposed to be Schrader's coming back too.
Okay.
Basically, we have three of them.
So we can.
That's fine.
We can spread you out. Lisa, do you want to do your business? Are you going to wait for Steve?
We really should.
Okay. Well, we wanted to report, yeah, so.
The only report we have is actually that.
Well, we'll wait till he gets here and then we'll proceed with that. Lisa, do you want to do your business?
So this morning, I just seen a motion to a president of the July 21st, 2020 proceedings as written by auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspaper.
Just a moment. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the July 21st, 2020 board proceedings as presented and written. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
I also need a motion to approve handwritten warrants to the Jackson County reporter for $67.84 for bank statement deposit slips and check charges and to Solutions Bank for $61,536 for the annual managed services contract.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the handwritten warrants as presented. Any further discussion? Is, we didn't include, couldn't wait till next week, the 61,000 or it had to be done? Last thing, okay. Just this, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
I have one more thing for the board, but I think I will wait a longer session to discuss that.
Okay. Good enough. And that is all, Lisa? Is there any other visitors or citizens online with us today that would like to speak?
That's not it. I read that. Never mind. Those two, Jeff, their signature. Okay.
Okay, seeing none. We have just been joined by Andy McKean, our state representative. Andy, would you like to come forward and present? Good morning, Andy. Hope your, hope your trip was safe and.
Well, I'm glad to be able to visit because something was just more of a pleasant topic than.
And what we've been hearing?
And I'm a part of a committee that is preparing to celebrate Red Hen's 100th birthday. He turns 100 years old on September 3rd. And he's a, I guess he's a MacCoke to Jackson County treasure. And we want to make the day a very special one. And one thing we really appreciate is that the Jackson County Board of Supervisors would consider declaring September 3rd Red Hen Day in Jackson County. I know that others on the committee are in touch with the city council and, and I'm also in touch with the state of Iowa. So we want to make it a very special day for Red and we just welcome your participation.
Sounds like a good idea. So I guess, yeah, I mean, Red, Red's been around here a while, 100 years. Yes, he's.
Has some history there.
He's called an icon or? Oh, well, we certainly, I mean, we don't, we're not looking for action today. Is that correct? And we could.
Just as long as it's done in time for September 3rd.
Okay, well, I guess, you know, my thought process is, I don't know why there'd be any negative comment, but I'd like to give it time to get any feedback that.
Well, we'll have to write a resolution too.
Right. And if we have to, you know, if we start a if you start some of these processes, you know, where does it go or, you know, from there? So, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to get some feedback on.
No, I don't think there'll be too many dangerous implications.
No, I don't think so either.
But I don't know if the press is here or not, but I just assume it not be a story at this point because we do want to kind of make the day a surprise for Red.
The press is online, so I hope you, Kelly and Tracy can acknowledge that anyway, and maybe we could surprise Red if that so works out. Again, if we set a precedence and do that, then that's just what I want to hear and what people might think. Definitely.
The number of folks making to 100 are fairly limited.
We could set that at 100. I appreciate.
Well, thank you very much and look forward to getting together with you folks again and talking about issues. So but, you know, if I'm not reelected, we, we just might get together for a social occasion instead. But look forward to visiting with you one way or the other.
Okay. Thanks, Andy. Thanks for stopping by and have a safe trip. Steve or Steve, would you like to present?
I can.
For the ATV commission?
I sure can, so. Thanks again, you guys, for letting me. I think in review of the proposed ordinance, I believe the board of supervisors wanted to have some input basically to what's been going on out here after the resolution changed.
Well, that's the way we left it. I think we left the resolution, if you come back in six months, three months and give us a record of what, update of what's happening.
We were actually planning on being here in May and then COVID kind of hit seriously at that time, so we couldn't be here. So then I.
Well, it's not pressing.
I arranged Steve to be a part of this meeting as well. He's going to present at this time some of the information that we have. I think the board supervisor is one of the kind of knowledges, some of the tickets written and all that kind of thing. On the registration order and then going to turn it over to see Officer Schrader at this point, if you don't mind. And then, is that okay?
Yeah. Sure. I guess I did have a call yesterday on a couple of things on the ordinance, and I thought they were going to try to join. But you were scheduled for 9:30. We're a little bit ahead of schedule, but I think you can go ahead and present anyway if there's questions, if they're available in a little bit.
Well, I think we met last on January 7th, like to report back in May. COVID was strong, not that it's not strong now, but and give the board a report as to what we've had per calls for service and any citations that were written. So I had one of our staff do an in-house search on ATVs and from January 7th of this year up to present, we have eight calls per service. A couple of those are duplicate with some, some kids in the San Diego area. Yeah. Nothing major, you know, just, just minor traffic operating in a reckless manner, what have you. Some tickets were written. We've had four citations written in that timeframe for the ATV operation. Three of them were operating on the highway and then the fourth one was.
State highway?
Yes. And then before the other one would have been a non-registered ATV. So we literally had, you know, nothing major happen. No. The influx of complaints weren't there. I did reach out to Arlene to find out how many registrations we had from January, July 1 to December 31, and then from January 1 through June 30th of this year. And last year, I think we had 900 and some odd registrations in that six-month period. This year, we had another 730 something, you know, right, give or take a few. So altogether in the last year, we've had 1,600 plus ATVs registered here in Jackson County. So it's, it's something that people wanted. People are utilizing it, and I don't think they're really using the system based on numbers.
Okay.
So that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Have we talked, Steve, or has the committee have talked anymore? I know when we first started this, we talked about maybe like Wisconsin having a license plate or registration per, per county per se. I know we have the registration is basically statewide, correct?
That's the DNR though.
Yeah, through the DNR, yeah.
And we tried to do that. Actually, we, Terry Rowley and myself really, really looked into that a while back. Oh, gosh, about two, three years ago, about having a plate. And when you get a plate, put on a ATV or onto a UTV, UTV thing is kind of, is really actually sought after the DNR. So when you start putting a plate on something like that, then it's more of a DOT and a deal. And we're really, really shunned on that a little bit through the DNR that we would want to do something like that. So we just dropped it. And it ended up the DNR kind of more or less said, you know, just put your registration on. That's all we require. And then what you're going to have to do then is just go to your county board supervisor, then they're going to go ahead and waive off of whatever the rules are of, of the ATVs. So that's how we kind of left it. Wisconsin, they naturally have different laws than we do. So it doesn't really correspond with that. Some of the cities are kind of doing something with some plates.
Did I hear that Preston is doing something as far as the city limits of Preston for if you want to ride into the city?
I guess I don't, I have not heard that.
I have heard that.
I've heard that, that Preston is $35, $40 a year or something to that effect.
Yeah, and that's all a city deal.
Yeah.
Bellevue has been looking at it. MacCoke to here on the sidebar of that, they've not looked at part of that. So it's like, but that's just where residents actually that live in the, in the town. But like if, for example, myself, if I want to go into Preston and I have a buddy of mine that lives up on one of the off-streets, I can actually drive up there and go and see.
You can do that. Yeah, I didn't get to talk to Tracy or just Scott on that.
That's what I was, I was, but the thing that is though, the people that actually are residents of that, they can kind of go around wherever they want to go and then see you guys. I don't, otherwise.
The gentleman that called me was inquiring for the, from the simple fact of maybe revenue, you know, as far as some revenue coming in to take care of maybe some maintenance on the roads or, you know, I would think it'd be minimal.
I'd say very minimal.
Yeah.
Maybe want to check that.
Luanne, would you see if you could get Sarah on the line also? I have a question for her on this ordinance.
I know South to go down the state plate, you drive the highway. But that is a state deal. When we tried to do this before, we had very few counties with plate, like, you know, very few counties open. Now they're fixing more counties open. So maybe the state will do something with that, we don't know.
Yeah, because I guess, you know, we're, we're coherent now with Clinton County as far as timeframe goes. And Jones County doesn't have a timeframe, so I'd like the idea that works the same. I did have a question. A gentleman had a question on. I'm sorry, what did she say, Luanne?
She's going to zoom in. Okay. I'll let you know when she's here.
So I guess that's just a thought. I mean, I don't know that if you're going to require another, another registration or a fee, then, then when I go to Preston and I go south, I'm in Clinton County, then then what?
And that's, that's one of the reasons.
And I think it's up to each individual town to if they want to. Yeah, the problem with Bellevue is we only got one way yet. Mill Creek is the only way yet. I mean, it's too bad we couldn't get from Bellevue Cascade into Springfield South.
Kind of let it be known that, that we are as a 12, and not the commission so much, but the 12, we're actually actively being involved with.
We should have, we should have had questioned Andy about that one. Yeah, I know. I mean, that's another thing. I know that other cities have had variances placed on the restrictions as far as getting into corporate city limits. And, and there is, there is a trail through, or route through Bellevue, correct? That you can.
But most of those towns that like that don't have a highway that are charging that, like the state highway.
Right.
You know, another one that's, that's cute that would be like Oxford Junction, I don't know where they're going to count. But you know, it's, it's tough getting into that town. It's really, I mean, that's south.
Yeah.
But you know, they've got 136 coming in.
Yeah, and then going north. Yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, Oxford Mills would be the only county road coming to.
What we're hoping for is that the state or somehow it could be a variance of some sort where the cities could possibly opt into that or opt out, whatever you want to call it. That they could actually, whenever it hits 45 mile an hour or 50 mile an hour coming into the town, at that point, any roads that would come up to that level.
I want to see if. Okay, so Sarah, as, as we spoke yesterday briefly, we had a question from an individual. It was, it was on section 5A. So it depends on how you read that. It says, at a rate of speed greater than, and this is a restriction, of course, but greater than 35 miles per hour, or he says, it says, or greater than the responsible or proper under all existing circumstances. So his question was, if it's nice and bright and sunny and dry and I'm on a county paved road, can I drive 55? Because this is reasonable and proper.
No, 35 would be.
35. Would you explain that, please, Sarah?
So, um, the code actually has two different code sections. There's the 321 covers almost all motor vehicle by regulations, including when you can ride an ATV on the road. And that, that code section includes like farmers and utility workers and whatnot. Under that section, it states that ATVs on a highway cannot go faster than 35 miles per hour. So that's where the first part of 51A comes from. Now, under 321I, which covers ATV ordinance or rules of ATVs, it states that you're not to drive greater than reasonable and proper under all existing circumstances. Now, that code section, 321I, is regarding ATV use off-road. So it's not, that language is not considering it to be on the road. We can certainly cut it off and just simply state at a rate of speed greater than 35 miles per hour. That's not a problem. But that is how, basically you took two code sections and combined them together.
So it could be interpreted to that way to say, you know, these, my road conditions are perfect. I can drive 40 miles an hour now. That's basically what he was saying. This or, this or meant to him. You could, or greater than reasonable.
Well, it's.
Controversial to the part to say, hey, I, it's different to say, all right, Mr. Schrader's seen somebody come down the road and it's icy and foggy and slick out. So now his interpretation is you shouldn't be going over 25 or 15. That, again, is an interpretation to this section. To him, say, oh, you're going too fast.
I get that. So my recommendation would be to amend that to just simply state at a rate of speed greater than 35 miles per hour. Obviously, if the road conditions say that they shouldn't even be going that fast, then, you know, I would hope that for their own safety, they would modify their speed if necessary.
Well, it's no different than a car or.
Yeah, right.
We should, I mean, I think that's what it should be.
I think.
So with the DNR, 35 mile an hour, that's it.
Yeah. But I just don't want any discrepancy to say, you know, is there a gray line there that says, well, the road condition is, is perfect. It's dry. Yeah, I get it. I get it, you know, but.
That's fine. It's an easy fix.
Yeah. So we need to strike that out of it. I would like to see it. Does anybody else have any other input? I guess I would, you know, other than having a gray area, 35 is the limit, period. Yeah. Okay, any other questions for Sarah? Do we need to change the ordinance? I think, well, if you wanted to.
With striking.
With striking.
Of adding that onto that.
Correct, Sarah?
What was the question? I didn't hear it.
We, we can approve the ordinance as presented with that strike.
With that addition.
Um, right, but it's an ordinance, so you have to pass it, you know, you have to have multiple. You can't, it's not going to be effective today, so.
Right.
You, yes. We all strike that, and if everything else looks good, then I can take the draft word off and, and send it to you with that correction.
So basically, it's going to say at a rate of speed greater than 35 miles per hour. That's it.
Period. Yes.
Period. Right. Any other questions for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Hang on just a minute. I want to see if there's, anybody else from the public have any questions at this time? I see that we've been joined by the Bellevue PD. Any questions from the Bellevue PD? Maybe just to update you a little bit, we've had a conversation and a report from Deputy Schrader as far as what went on since January. Basically, eight calls total for tickets, and there's approximately 1,600 registered ATVs in the county as of today. We discussed a couple of things in the ordinance, and one was 5A, and there was some discussion of maybe a gray area in there, so we struck out the second part of that line. Any questions for us?
That would be the timing for the public hearing?
The public hearing, yes.
August 18?
Okay, any other questions for the ATV club or the supervisors?
I don't have any.
I don't do. So would we like to move forward?
I move. We have a public hearing on the ordinance on August 18th at 10:00 AM.
Second. I would, I have a motion and a second to have a public hearing scheduled for August 18th at 10:00 AM. Is that what you said, Jack? Regarding the proposed ATV, UTV ordinance as presented with the strike included, correct? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yep. Luanne? Are you available?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Calendar this week. We'll start with 1 o'clock this afternoon. It's a children's advisory committee meeting for Eastern Iowa Mental Health and Disability Services. That'll be by Zoom for Jack. Tomorrow, Wednesday, July 29 at 1 p.m. is the ISAC legislative webinar.
I think that got moved to Thursday. The email I received yesterday said that I registered for it again, and it said it was after that, I got an email from Ben that he would attend to represent Jackson County regarding these bills, but it also said this is the meeting that was scheduled for Wednesday. Now it's Thursday, so it was, they were back to back, so I don't know.
Well, surprisingly, there's room on Thursday, so it's on Thursday, 1 p.m.
Yeah.
The calendar's open, so. Thursday morning, July 30 at 9 a.m., we have our work session with the Pioneer Cemetery Commission at County Home Cemetery. Unless it's raining.
It looks good.
It's not supposed to rain, so. Bring your own lawn chairs. They're going to bring water and bug spray.
And they're going to do the signing, the signing at that same thing?
Yes, it's a photo opportunity for the new plaque that they we've had made for the cemetery. And they want to talk about their recommendations for that cemetery and for future burials up there, so.
So that that's just discussion, no correct? There's no action to be taken. That's right.
No decisions. Friday, July 31 at 7 a.m. is a MOCO leadership meeting for Larry. At 10 a.m. on Friday is Iowa Workforce Development Office Hours Meeting for Jack by Google Meet, which is another like Zoom. At noon that day is a workforce CEO Office Hours Meeting for Jack. Monday, August 3 at 7 a.m. is an early travel Iowa Executive Board Meeting for Jack. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, August 4 at 9 a.m. The two bits of business I have this morning is appointing alternates to two of our boards that we're already serving on. The first one is for Mental Health and Disability Services Governing Board. We need an alternate for Jack. They meet on the third Monday of each month at 3 o'clock as a general rule. I didn't see that there were any conflicts for either one of you to do that.
Any volunteers? Who got the short straw? That's a short straw.
For the next one we have to do, that we have the second one we have this morning. The second one is for the TAG group, which is part of RTA, started in September. Mike has been covering those meetings. They are looking to have us appoint an alternate. They meet the first Thursday of every three months to quarterly meeting at 11 o'clock. I did not see any any conflicts there, except when there's an RPA meeting. That will be at 9 and this is at 11, so I don't think it's a big conflict.
I can do the Mental Health Disability Services.
I could do the TAG because I'll be here for the RPA meeting.
Unless you want to do.
Difference. That's fine.
I feel like I get enough on my plate. So I can do the. Somebody's going to have to remind you.
We only have to go if I'm not there.
So I'm counting on you, Jack. I get it.
I can do the TAG. That's fine.
If you're up there. Well, RTA, what is it? I'm on that, too.
Don't fight over it now, boy.
Jack's got that workforce ordinance.
Yeah, what? You should take six months off after that. Let's see that. Thank you, Luanne. And maybe we could try to get ahold of Ben, Marty, or Heather?
Todd's next door. I want to have him. I saw him walk in.
Okay, ask him if there's anything he'd like to report.
I did have a call yesterday when I was in here for one of my meetings from an engineering agency out of Dubuque. His name was Jim Hodge. And he wanted to know about our bridge, if we needed any assistance in design work or whatever for the 188th Street. And I said, well, no, that we now have a assistant county engineer on on board part-time and Alex, and then I told him who it was. He said, oh, okay. And then he wanted to know if we had had any inquiries on county engineer's position. And I said, no, but if you have somebody that you could suggest. But he didn't.
Well, hopefully that we see some applicants come in and maybe we need to reach out a little further and talk on the resources about that.
I guess I don't think it would hurt to talk to Becky and see if she had any inquiries or questions, and if she hasn't, we may have to.
Reach out.
Because I don't know if you listened, I can't make it yesterday morning, but.
I was actually out of town. I did not get that opportunity.
Too bad. Time will be over.
You got bus tracks again. Got bus tracks.
I think we're more than that.
Not necessarily. Is he expecting to come in?
I'll just call Ben and ask if he has any anything for us today.
Becky, I see that you are available here on our Zoom meeting. Would you give us an update on the engineer position? Oh, is she available to? With her system, her speaker system, is she available to?
Speaker phone.
For some reason. Yeah, she's not showing showing video or.
Mike.
Audio. She might just have to walk down the hall. So at this time, let's take a short recess. Reconvened. Okay, so good morning, Becky.
Hello.
We are questioning or wondering, looking for an update for our county engineer position. Have we have any received any applicants or interest?
We have received two applicants. I'm not sure either one is valid based on the content in their resumes. I will share those with the board. All of our job postings are set to expire the end of this month, so we may want to re-review our plan of attack for receiving applicants.
Yeah, I mean, is there any other suggestions as far as reaching out to anywhere or someone?
You know, it's been submitted to all of the counties. It's been submitted to the National Association of County Engineers. It's been submitted to Naco. It's been submitted to ISAC. It's been in the Telegraph Herald. It's been online. It's been on Indeed. It's been on all of those mobile platforms. I know in speaking with some of the other counties that recently hired engineers, they did directly have to seek out applicants to get them to apply, so.
Well, we'll certainly, we certainly want to extend our deadline.
Yeah, we put an initial deadline of July 30. Not a deadline for applicants, but an addition, an immediate review date of July 30 for any applicants that we had. So that's what, just a few days here. So if you want me to be on the agenda for next week, we can regroup and determine how you want to move forward.
That would be great.
Okay, and I will get you copies of the two I had. I was just going to wait to see if any others came in here by the end of the week. Past that July 30, so I'll get you the two that I have, and we can go from there.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Yep, you bet.
Okay, do we have Marty or Heather available? Have we tried them? We will again take a short recess. We will reconvene at this time, and we are joined by Todd Kenny, our Jackson County Engineer, interim engineer. Good morning, Todd.
Morning. So I'm just going to give a brief summary, I guess, update of the meeting this morning with the city regarding the South Main Street Bridge, so. As you're aware, the city was worth a million dollars in the city bridge with those records. I still need to just verify the jurisdictional jurisdictional breakdown there. We talked quite a bit, you know, Mike was there for that about the some of the annexation issues that probably need to be put up, but.
So you have a plot of plot that to break down when Clark come up with the 3565.
No idea. I know that Heather also looked at that. That might be a question for her.
Yeah, I just need to verify that because the map they showed showed the annexation where the city has the north half of the bridge and the Saudi, the south half is counted. But there must be in the in the legal description of the annexation boundary, there must be some something that makes it jaw to create that that 6535 or 7228 or whatever the split was. I've heard a couple of different sets of.
If I remember right, there was also a center line and a diagonal line or something across there.
Which would be highly unusual, but not out of the realm of possibility, but anyway, need to verify that. So what what I think kind of makes sense is and I just kind of verified that with Mike. So the county isn't really kicking money into the project. If if the city wants to hire consultants to do the design, then they pay for that directly. Then the county could provide the construction observation administration, which would most likely be as much if not more than the design cost. So we, you could do that with Alex. So you could utilize Alex. You could utilize Mike. You could utilize existing staff for efficiency there, and then the county would provide that to the project. That would basically offset the city's expense for their design fee, which they have to pay out of their pocket. It can't come out of a million dollars. And then the county would just be on the hook, if you will, for any construction cost above the million with the breakdown. So if it's $100,000 over and it's a 7030 split, you guys are paying $7,000. So potentially, if the project comes in under that million dollars, you guys would not be out any money. It's just your your value in the project is the CACO.
Well, with that being said, if they hire an engineer to design the bridge and they can't use that million dollars and that fee comes to us.
No.
No.
So I'd write that, so the 2080 agreement would be set up that the the city's responsibility is to hire consultant and and take the project to letting in a war. After the war to a contractor, the county would step in and we, you guys would do the construction administration and observation. So those costs would be borne individually by, it's two separate items. City's paying for design, county's paying for observation, but we're providing it ourselves, so we technically don't pay anything other than we have, that staffs get paid.
And what's the advantage? Because, well, because the fact is, and Todd explained it in the meeting, but there's utilities there. And well, in the big scope of things, it's city utilities, so.
The the big, and one of the big questions, too, in this for the elected officials, so it's, you know, the look of it, the feel of it, what it's going to end up being is going to be more like a city bridge, obviously. But the big thing is during construction, are you going to allow this road to be closed? It's 7,200 vehicles a day. You got the hospital going to be opening up, potentially North Platte's going to be worked on at the same time. If you allow the road to be closed, I think I need to have a conversation with Alex, but I think that would probably open it up for Alex maybe to do the design, even though it's going to be non-standard potentially with the the trail and all that. Then there's potential, he should could have the ability to do that. If you're going to keep this open to traffic and do it in staged construction, which would increase the cost, but then you could keep traffic on, basically. So that's the bigger thing. That would definitely be a very non-standard bridge. You'd have to do this in staging, and that would be something I would see. I would assume that Alex would not watch it take off, basically. The big question is, if you can do the staged construction with the increased cost for the million dollars or less, that that seems the prudent thing to do because to less disruption to the 7,200 vehicles a day they're using.
Yeah.
But it becomes a financial decision, but if you can get it done for the money that that's available, that the city's providing, that the county is not providing at all, then why wouldn't you just do that, you know? And then if you, they pay for the design and and the county's paying for the CACO by use, by having our own staff do it, the county's not out of any money. The bridge gets built. There's a new bridge. The county hasn't really written a check to the city.
So whatever utilities go, I mean, the sewer line runs separate from that.
Yeah, so there's sewer water. I'm assuming there's.
But the sewer isn't anywhere close to the bridge.
I think the sewer is on the
Somewhere on the west side.
West side, and they're going to build a trail on the east side. So even if they widen the bridge for a, say, a 30-foot roadway, I think the corner pile would easily miss the sewer, but that'll be something to figure out when they do it, get a survey. But I think the sewer should be fine. Water main, I don't know where it's at. You'll have probably, there's overhead electric that's driving by there. There's probably some kind of telecommunication, but telecommunication and and electric, as long as you notify the utilities early enough, relocation of those those expenses are borne by the utility.
So I guess, you know, there's a lot of conversation to be had yet here. I mean, a ton of conversation, but again, like we talked, to start to this thing is is to draft the 2080, look it over, make changes as needed that you see.
And so I'm going to try, I'm going to verify the annexation jurisdictional breakdown. I'm going to create a draft based on what I if the city pays for design, the county pays for observation, and then you have the split of any cost of remitting and start with that. See, that seemed, to me, it seems reasonable because the county technically isn't really going to be out anything. Just depends on what the total price tag is.
Sure. And we also talked about, I mean, maybe this is a different conversation, but the five-year rope plan.
Yeah, so before the county expends money on construction, the project would have to be a five-year program. You can spend money for design and that kind of thing without having any program technically, but before you spend a dollar on construction, you want to put early fire program. It sounded like potentially they're talking maybe about letting it in the fall of spring of spring of next year, potentially starting construction, but I'm guessing if they got to reload, relocate utilities, it's going to be pushed back.
Well, again, we want to coordinate with Platte Street, but if, you know, this is something that really needs to be done, if we could streamline it and maybe meet the Platte Street project or half of it, you know, it might be a good idea. Again, we'll take a look at our five-year rope plan and our carryover and then something like that. So a lot of conversation yet, so there's nothing that that we need to really that we know for sure yet, I should say, so.
Other than there's a billion dollars.
Other than we need to use it now. We appreciate the input and following up with.
So I'll get a draft. I'll forward it to you two guys, and I'll I'll have you guys look at it first before I send it to the city network.
That'd be great.
All right.
And Mike kind of updated us on the bridge damage, so, yeah. Guess we're good, huh?
So what do we do looking forward to that bridge? If we drop it to a ten-ton or lower, is that quite limited on?
On the damaged trust bridge?
Yeah.
So what, what's your question?
So when do we look at replacing? Or is there anything we can do to make it structurally back to where it's supposed to be?
Yeah, so then Mike is working with I I W to get a design to repair.
Right.
They'll take that design, create a cost estimate for repair. Once we get that information in hand, we'll go to the insurance company or the, the company that caused the damage and say, here's, here's what's proposed. They will have the, the ability to get their own review done and, and repair. And then it's just a matter of, if we can get on the same page, then we can go have the repair made at their expense. If we can't get on the same page, then it becomes kind of a legal issue, but, um, I, I think, based on the damage, I've heard, I haven't seen it, I think we can realistically repair it back to at least its original condition where I think it's posted at nineteen ton.
Right.
Still being posted at nineteen ton, it should be on your pro, it should be moving forward to get replaced.
Right.
Uh, but I think at this point, uh, if you can get it repaired and get it repaired back to its original condition, and it's gonna be paid for by the insurance company, I think that's, that's the right path to go down.
I know Mike said possibly they'd drop the tonnage on the wall. If they have to drop the tonnage, then it's not back to the bridge.
Yeah, but if they repair it, there's the two hangers that, that, one is cryptic bent and the other one, I think, is just bent out of plane. If they repair those, it's my understanding it...
Should be back to...
It could be back to the nineteen ton, but if you leave it as is, you'd have to drop the coast.
Oh, yeah, if you leave it alone.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna do that, no. Okay, we sure appreciate it, Todd, and...
Thank you much.
Yep, alright.
Thank you.
Oh, right. No Marty yet? No, Heather?
No, where are you at?
Yeah, call either. I'm sorry, Todd.
Who has the annexation description, legal description for that?
I can get that through.
Okay, thank you.
Again?
When we want Todd to look over the applications that we have, to see if they do have the...
Let's take a short recess at this time. I, uh, we will reconvene the meeting at this time and we're joined by Marty Hudlicker, Jackson County Maintenance Supervisor.
Uh, it's been ages since I've been here. Um, just a few things I've done.
Marty, I just want you to know, oh, you really missed your... But you like your truck.
What?
You like your truck.
Oh, yeah. I like my new van, too.
Yeah, sure you do.
I was gonna be smart, too. I didn't miss you, but I, I have.
I'll drink to that.
It was a joke. Anyway, um, just a few things. Down at the welcome center, we had to change the pressure tank out and the controls that run the well because the tank went bad and then the well just sat there on off, on off, and nobody was there. I would suggest, if, when you shut that down, maybe, maybe shut that stuff off. The air conditioning and everything, because it...
Well, you need the air on.
Well, that could be too, yeah.
Cause there's books and stuff in there. You don't wanna get...
Right. Something else we've done, done there that I didn't think you'd be on to. But anyway, um, I did have that replaced. I made a bunch of shields, as you know, for the recorder, the auditor, the trader, the veterans affair. Um, I moved all Frank Freebird requested, I moved my stuff out of the shed up there. So I took it over and put it in the care facility shed, stored, gonna store it there. I had the lawn, uh, sprayed for weeds and fertilizer, and we will do that on a regular basis. Once in the spring, late spring, once in the fall. I also bug bombed the welcome center down there because it's nasty with bugs. Uh, I'm, I'm talking a layer of bugs on the basement floor that there, of everything. I, I got pictures of it, if you don't believe me.
I don't need to.
Okay, well, I bug bombed them and I talked to Lisa and we are getting a quote from the exterminator that does the cordials because they go to Preston and she said they can do that. But I have not received that back as of yet.
So that facility has not been opened this year yet, correct?
As far as I know, no.
So we need to have a conversation with...
I've been talking about getting together with the tourism and, and Tom for the last several weeks. We need to do it. We need to decide what we're gonna do with that facility.
I know a lot, when I'm down there working, a lot of people pull in there and set their hole in and take off, but I don't, I don't know what they're doing, you know? But I do, do know there's a few garden that... Took the skid loader and one of my lawnmowers that I only use for snow, took it to landfill so I could build Arlene's production yard or whatever it is.
Wait, now, you took it where?
To the land, or the care facility.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. Put it in the shed there. Did I say landfill?
Yes, you did.
Okay, no. Worked, I did some work on the, the toilet and the shower over at Sheriff's Office. Uh, we are gonna replace the, the shower handle because they just keep cranking on it, br- breaking it off. So I bought a valve that is a push button. So you push it on, it runs for three or four minutes and then it shuts itself off. And, um, I replaced the flush valve on the arrow down at the county shed for the guys. And I probably did a lot of other stuff, but I can't remember exactly what it was. I do have a couple of work requisition that before I do them, I want you guys to okay them because they're, they're kinda extended. And here's the price of the, the motor for the door for Ben. And that probably could change a little bit too, because it's a, I think it's a year or so old.
So you started with thing filing?
No. No, I got the, I got the steel.
So instead of putting in three foot by three foot frames, put in a three foot by nine foot, put a couple of those in, just slice the glass.
Okay.
Save a bunch of money.
Well, Arlene's supposed to come up here. Ar- Arlene... Okay. Arlene wants bigger glass, because she, they got that off, out on the thing, taped out on the desk. And she feels she's gonna feel like she's in thing, in, in a cave.
Well, that's what she asked for.
No, she, no, she asked for replacement. Then Larry brought the glass and we have to make the thing to fit the glass. Is the problem I have. You know, she wants a opening, I don't know what, I don't know. She was supposed to be here, like I said. To bu- to do this this way, it's three hundred and seventy dollars for the glass that I gotta buy. If I buy three pieces of eight-foot glasses, four hundred and thirty-seven, it's half the steel and half the labor to build it. You know, because I, I don't have all the styles I have to put in there.
She also has a quote for a brand-new countertop.
Yeah.
Taking out the two existing countertops and putting in one...
Well, it's two, it's two, but it's bolted together to make one long countertop.
And then Marty would have to put something in the front, because they're not gonna push the countertops together.
Right.
So then Marty would have to make a panel.
Just a panel for the front.
So she does have a quote for a new countertop.
And that's just to make it all one? I thought we talked about that. We're okay with what we're...
Well, what we were gonna do is slide it down and she doesn't want that. She still wants that countertop long, but she wants a solid countertop. She doesn't want the gap in it. I'm just a messenger.
I thought we talked and talked and talked about this.
So you haven't done anything yet, correct?
I got, I got the steel laid over there.
You have the steel laid.
No, no, I won't order that till, I got the frame made.
So she wants the countertop taken off.
The, the existing one.
Take the existing countertop off.
Beautiful blue countertop that there's not a damn thing wrong with, that she wants that pulled off.
Yes.
Yes, because she wants a solid countertop.
We've kind of put a halt...
Well, we all want lots of things that we can't have.
We've kind of put a halt on anything because we, we're a little fragmented here. We need to kind of get...
Yeah.
We need to get back together again and figure out, and what it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
But we met, we met at the office and we agreed on doing what we decided. Now, whether it's done with the glass or if we can do it more reasonable, cost-effective with plastic glass or a different type of frame without the steel.
Would you guys be open to putting a, a little wall around the top, about four down and then putting the glass up for that? That way and moving the lights, just move...
I think that's ridiculous.
What?
Doing that. Also, I got an email from Nick Hucker there about Plastics Unlimited now are doing these sheets that you can use.
I have seen, I have seen the email, yeah.
So I don't know what they look like or what they are.
I personally agree with you. I think until you guys do something permanent, something temporary should be in there. I think, because to do that permanent, I think they need to change the counter and everything, but that's just my opinion, you know? What we're, if going under them lights like that, it, it's just not gonna look good at all.
What was your original estimate of the cost to do it the way that we talked about?
Uh, I, I said two thousand or less.
And that does not include the counter?
No.
Okay. So if you change the plan, what is your estimated cost?
I think, I think we could probably do it for, it won't be that much less, but like fifteen hundred, thousand to fifteen hundred.
You mean with the drop-down wall?
Yeah, because it's, it's so much less labor.
So we're basically doing a four, or a two-by-four wide drop-down and just drywall it?
Yeah, and then put a post and then we'll just build a little frame to put right in, in here, in here, in here.
You know, I, I'm okay with that if it's not time-consuming and I'd like to see a drawing of it.
Another thing is she wants a door in there and I, I don't have a door that'll go there. She wants it to swing this way, so when they come back in, they don't have to tell the people to move over. And every door I got either swings this way or it'll swing that way. You know, I can't change the swing of the door. I have a nice glass door that we took out of somewhere and I can't remember where, but it swings the wrong way.
I think that's one thing downstairs we talked about.
I, I don't know where it comes from. I cannot remember that. But it just, and then I got the, the big, the door that we put in, the, that come out of the ramp, but it's, it's like this big. Here's already.
Good morning, Arlene. So we're discussing...
Sounds a lot different than what we had talked about.
Well, it's, once I got going with it, I realized that it's a lot of labor building that steel frame. And if we drop that down and make a wall across there, that's all two by fours. It, you know, it's, it's ten times easier, half, half the steel.
And how many support posts do we need to put in there?
I, I would just book up like at least one, because you can hang it on the wall on this side and we can put a post here and I, I would set one post in the middle.
Have you discussed this with Arlene?
Yes.
And you're okay with that? And what about the countertop? We need to change the countertop.
It's gonna be a lot more efficient for us to work with one smooth countertop all the way across. And then, did you turn off the glass?
Making it bigger?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's, that's gonna give us more work area with our customers rather than just having three feet to work through when a lot of times you have more than one customer at a time. So what's heavier, glass or plastic glass?
Glass. Glass is a lot heavier.
Okay.
And, and I can't answer that.
So is it better for us to get a hold of Plastics Unlimited to say we need a sheet of plastic glass? Of course, we gotta figure out...
This isn't plastic glass. This is just a film glass or a, a roll, isn't it?
I do not have any idea what it is. I just know they make something that they said you can use.
I think, I don't know if you ever been to McCogalumber, they have that. I think that's what it is. But I, I can check. And I can check that before.
They may, may sheet so too. I don't know.
But the thing, the thing with plastic glass versus glass, and if that's gonna be permanent, after a while of rubbing it, it's gonna get, I'm gonna call it foggy or whatever, you know? Where glass, unless you scratch it with something, never, never fades or fogs up.
I'm not, what's the length of that?
Well, it's gonna be twenty, right at, because of the three-foot steel, it's gonna be twenty-four feet, nine inch, or not the steel, the glass, because it's three-foot chunks, and then you gotta put a inch in between there. So it's gonna be twenty-four feet, nine inches.
And you're saying you can do it with three eight-foot pieces?
Well, yeah, I, I actually, I'd cut them down to make it right at twenty-four feet would work better for us because of the door stuff. And for them, three pieces of steel, it's four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, I do believe.
Not steel, glass.
The glass, yeah.
That's okay. I just wanted to be sure. Yeah, with the glass.
Yeah. And eight, we had to buy six pieces of the three-by-three to finish it out and...
You've got five now.
Yeah.
That's fifteen.
Right.
You need twenty-four.
Yeah. You got six more?
You got fifteen and you're only going to twenty-four, that's nine feet, that's three more.
Okay, then I, and I'm wrong there then. I apologize. Because for some reason, I figured we needed six sheets. And I'm sure that's what I had him quoting, so it would be cheaper that way, or, you know, less than what I quoted you.
And you really wouldn't have to do three sheets. You could do one big one, put it somewhere.
Well, I would, but it won't, it just will look, it will... You know, it just, it's gonna look like it's odd because these are all here and then the other big ones.
So how many openings are you talking about?
You have to think about our work. You know, we have certain, certainly, if someone comes in for a marriage application, for example, that's three people. And it's gonna be hard to do it through a three-foot window.
Well, they don't have to all sign at the same time, really?
If you want it to be efficient and get them that out, yes. If you want us to spend a half an hour with them, we can. But we usually give each one a sheet of paper, instruct them on what they need to fill out so that we can process it quicker.
What's the bigger piece that I brought up?
Four by seven, I believe it is, Larry. I, I'm just guessing.
Three and a half by seven.
What do you mean?
I mean, three and a half, it's like forty-two inches. I don't think it's forty.
Oh. I, like I said, I...
Would that one work and then two more?
I don't know. It's just...
I mean, it's a little bit tall.
I know, but see, then you gotta jog up, over and back down.
No, I mean, just use that one. Don't use any of the smaller ones. And then buy two more and then you have...
Two, oh, buy two big ones?
Yeah. So then that's...
That's a possi- that's a possibility too, yeah.
It's just something to look at.
Yes, yes.
So then could you span, what did you say? Did you say seven? So you're gonna end up with a post on either side and then two posts in here and then you got three pieces.
Yeah, that, that's what I was getting at with buying the, 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 the eight-foot pieces. But if you, we go four-foot and buy two more four-foot pieces, yeah, that'll work too, Larry. Yes, yes.
But they're not eight-foot, they're seven. You said seven. I think they're three and a half foot. I mean, it'd be a little bit tall.
Yeah, it's taller, but I think it's seven foot long.
One bigger one. I brought five small ones and two larger, one bigger one and then one somewhere in between there. You know, if it works out, it works out, I guess. Then, then what would the working space be if you had a seventh foot, like a, whatever, a seven or eight-foot piece? Is your working space wider than, than three-foot?
Well, the thing of it is, underneath there...
It's all open.
It's gonna all be open.
So the whole thing is open.
Yeah. He, well, there's gonna be a post down somewhere because I can't span it that long and hold it up in the air.
Yeah, that you got a post there, either seven foot or eight foot.
Right. I put at least one, one down like you did over here to, to support it in the middle.
But am I correct in saying then the whole length of that is open, correct?
Correct.
Okay, what is...
Except where, except where the posts are.
Except where the posts are.
Right.
And that's, that gives plenty of working area, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, so then what about the countertop? Do we really have to replace the whole countertop?
Well, go ahead. No, it's your office. You, you tell.
What, what's the cost on that? I guess I'd like to see that.
Okay, and it, okay. We want this to look professional. We don't want it to look like, okay, there was a counter here, top countertop here, countertop here in blue and now we have this three foot section in the middle that we can't match the countertop, so we're just going to throw something in there. You, you want it to look professional because we are professional.
So how do you know you can't duplicate it?
We've already tried.
We did do that. We tried to, we had the guy that bought or sold it the first time come down and look at it. He says it's no longer available. I think two months after you buy it, it's, it's obsolete.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And we talked about moving it down too, didn't we?
Just.
Yeah, the one.
Yeah, we did.
We did at one point, but honestly, with passports and stuff, we need the space. It would be nice just to leave it the way it is and put a countertop across it. And I've said this before, if cost is an issue, I have a line item in my budget for my per film that I would be willing to totally give up, which is much more than what this is going to cost.
What, what was the price? Can we say that all out here? Do you remember what it was?
Thirteen hundred for the countertop. I can't give or take.
And it's two inches wider too and it's rounded on the, it's not.
Both sides?
Yeah, because it's cheaper. We went the cheapest route we could do. When I say we, I mean, Arlene, I was just there.
What about the door on the end?
Well, that's another thing. We discussed that and our, Arlene, if I'm correct, you want that door to open tow, toward the west, right?
Well, that's kind of a Jennifer thing.
Yes.
But it's.
But the door I have, it'll either open toward the door to the hallway or it opens into the counter inward. If we go out.
You got a right hand door and you got a left hand.
Yeah.
So it's going to have to open towards our other door because initially that door would be locked anyway, so that's what it's going to happen. What kind of a door are you proposing if we don't have one?
Well, they want a glass door so they can see through it and I have a glass, a door just like that.
But it is a swinger.
Right.
You, you, it wouldn't work to swing it toward the counter?
That, that would be intrusive for the people that are sitting there. We'll swing it out. It's not a big deal. I mean, we'll swing it out.
They're going to swing it this way toward the hallway door.
But if that's open and somebody comes in the other one, it's a blind one.
The other door will be locked.
The hall door will be locked, is what she's telling me.
And Jennifer, when she goes to let the passport people through, she would just have to stand there. Watch it go.
So do you have a cost total? I mean, we're still going to get a cost for different glass and if you're talking.
I, yeah, the, I think the, the glass part of it's going to be about the same.
You still need the post like you have the steel that you have then?
I'm going to need some of the steel, but not all of it because if we, I wouldn't really like to build a wall down so far, put sheet rock on both sides.
Like over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think that's fine.
And steel mark, we'll take that steel back. I did call him and ask him that, what I don't use.
Yeah.
As long as I don't cut it or it isn't outside and I didn't need the one of them.
Well, if it's permanent and we certainly want it to look decent, I, I don't, I don't see where a header like that would hurt anything coming down. What, tw- two foot or not?
At least.
I think it's going to be about thirty inches.
Yeah.
I think it'll be about thirty inches. Because I think it's, I don't have it in front of me, but I think the total length is seven, seventy-eight and if you take thirty-six away from that or thirty, be forty-two away from that.
Now you have your glass that's taller than two and three foot, so they've got, whatever the dimension of that is, less than.
By the end of the day, I will, I can have them numbers and then I, I'll text it to you or you, then that, you can share it with your board and then we'll go from there if you want.
I would say do that.
Are we looking at a number to keep it up?
Not till we find out.
I'm thinking my part of it is going to be less than the two thousand that I envision, but with her, with countertop, that's going to bump it up some, you know? But my part of it, I would say it's going to be considerably cheaper.
So we're still looking.
By six hundred bucks.
Still looking in the.
Supply wise.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, and labor wise too, because I don't have to make all them steel things every three feet. And I don't have to make, not only did I have to make them for the glass, I had to make something for up above it to match the ceiling. So I don't have any of that.
How are you going to frame the door? Open metal, that's going to be a heavy door. How are you going to frame that?
Uh, with that steel. I can do that. I'm, the, the end of it over here is still be, just like we always want to. Or we could build the wall, a wooden wall there. I never talked to that. We could build a little wooden wall there and put the door in that. Either way.
Still have the glass.
Yeah. Yeah. And it might support it better.
Yeah, it would. All right, let's get some numbers and if we're okay with the structure or the stub wall coming down like that is there and the door swinging toward the hallway door.
The stub wall could go right into the doorway frame and everything. That would be one piece. That would make that a lot simpler.
Say that again.
Make your, your top wall come across and then drop down to the floor and then have your opening three door.
On there, yeah. That's what I plan on doing.
Okay.
And like you said, before I, um, do that, I will get the price and I'll text it to you because I got your number and then you can tell the rest of your board members. Does that work?
Also.
She can email all of us.
Yeah, yeah.
Send it to Luanne so she can send it to all of us. So you know.
All right, I will do that.
She can, or get her the numbers and she can create an email for you.
Okay.
So.
My work things, will you check them out or?
What? Go ahead, Arlene.
So this will be decided in the next, like tomorrow. Or I don't have to wait a whole nother week to, to get this started.
Okay, you got a thirteen hundred dollar price on the countertop? Okay.
And we should have that here and on before I start building because I'm going to have some set stuff on it or cut holes through it to get to the floor. I, I think one of them should go clear down to the floor, the one in the middle, to be honest with you. We could do that. Or we, or we double it up underneath it.
What happens with the cabinet? You just leave that opening underneath there?
Uh, yes, but we're going to put a piece of, uh, in the front to cover the hole.
So you're not moving the counter at all then?
Well.
The cabinet.
We're not moving it this way, but we're, one counter is offset by an inch or so. So we're going to slide it out so they line up for whatever countertop on. It, it's the same all the way down through.
So whatever panel we have in front of it, it's going to look professional through that.
Yeah. I don't know if you know this, but everything I do.
Yeah.
You are a smart aleck.
Oh, wow.
So, yes, I, yeah, get us a number, get it to Luanne, she'll talk to Zach and Larry and I'll.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, I'm not, because I have one more thing. So the other part of what I wanted to talk to you about today is we put in Marty's budget, uh, for this current budget to hire someone part-time. This morning I gave you a job description and I talked to Becky. Um, I have it budgeted a little bit higher, but because this is a union covered position, this position would have to start at ten dollars and thirty-four cents an hour. It would then go to an increase to fifty cents an hour in six months and another fifty cents an hour in a year. So in a year's time, um, this position would go from ten thirty-four an hour to eleven thirty-four an hour. So I'm asking if it's okay, um, to advertise for this position or if you would like us to wait.
Well, it sounds to me when we were discussing this in the, uh, budgeting time that there was a real need for it.
There is a need.
So that's why we budgeted, so I don't know why we would need to discuss it further.
Okay.
We need to change. Yeah, I mean, we definitely, this, at this time anyway, we need to be a little cleaner and.
I'll get with Becky then and we'll get this advertised and get moving on.
And, and thank them over and let me know if you want that done or not and then we'll go from there.
Them too?
The, the two word requ- requisition.
I guess before you leave, um, is there a problem with the current overhead door?
No, she said they, every time they go to lift it up, if you got to reach way over top to lift it up and they're, they say it's hard on, is what I got from the treasurer herself.
We did that. We talked about that. It must be really heavy. Is it really heavy?
And Nancy back in the day said the same thing. So they've been wanting it for three or four years, five, six years, you know? It should have probably been put on when it was installed to begin with.
It's either you need to do something or you need to take it out.
And I.
You know what I'm saying? Because it's one or the other. Either, either we need it.
Do you need to close it?
Yes. The, see, I asked that question and this is the answer I got. Yes, they do. Because otherwise people stand there with that open and they want it swayed it on and they're closed.
But the doors unlock at eight thirty and the doors close at four.
Well, I'm just telling you that's what, I'm the messenger. That's just what they told me.
And that's all I'm just, just, merely stating.
When I asked that question, all the girls in there, all of them said, yes, we need it to open and close.
So.
So is there something besides a motor that you can just pull like this one where you can just pull it and raise it?
I know nothing about that thing, Larry. I never looked into. What I could do there again is I'll take the stub by it, I'll take the end cap off and see what it. I wanted to get a second bid, but I can't get a second bid on it even. I can't get nowhere to come and look at it.
Because if you can go, you can extend that shaft out and have like a pulley thing with the, whatever.
Just like a chain hoist.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I will check that out and, and get back to you on that too.
I mean, the motor has to look to something.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Even a full curtain of some sort.
Well, pulling that thing would, is a lot less, I mean, it's.
But if you put a pulley.
Your reduction is there, so it's not, you're not lifting the whole thing. Or maybe it needs to be balanced better. You crank the springs up a little bit.
Yeah, that's what I was going.
Again, I, I know nothing about that.
Like an overhead door.
Yeah, like an overhead door.
Check it out.
It might lift, it might lift itself.
Yeah, unlock it and go.
Yeah. Like a.
Like that?
Like a window shade.
Yeah, yeah.
I used to fix those all the time.
Um. I, I, I do not know.
I mean, you should have that where you can just.
I, I, I think it's been adjusted several times if I remember right. I'd have to ask.
Yeah, I think a full curtain, you know, probably did that for a couple of the bus sometimes.
Well, do we really want to get rid of the security part of it?
I like the security of that. Just Google the thing on there and they'll tell you how to adjust it.
I, I will do that.
Okay, how about the other request?
I can't believe they didn't put a block exhaust fan.
When they did all that work, yeah. So where does it have to go? Does, can you put it in the attic or you have to put it out?
Uh, you can go to the attic, but it's going to have to go out what I call the stink pipe because that is sprayed insulation and I really don't think we want to be cutting holes in the roof, do we?
I don't.
Yeah, I, again.
Just put some air freshener in there.
Well, they, I think they just want noise. I talked to Lisa, I said, let's get a radio. I think it's noise versus smell. Does that make sense?
No, not in the lease.
I, I think somebody, it's louder than they go to the restroom. That's.
Hail Mary. I'll just tell them to quiet it down.
All these big decisions.
Get, uh. Here's, here's what I would like.
Don't you dare say that.
Here's, you get another number one. Hey, you, uh, here's what I'd like. Give me an estimate of what that fan's going to cost you if you can put it up in the attic or to the soffit. Is that legal?
I can't go to the soffit because it's, unless we cut this, the insulation.
What about a filtered fan or something to that effect?
Yeah. We, I'm sure there's something we can put in there, but what I wanted is for you guys to say, yeah, go ahead and.
I want an estimate.
All right.
Check in.
Okay, so it sounds like you're going to do a lot of estimating, Marty, just so we can recap. You're going to get an estimate for the fan. You're going to look into an option for the roll of door and treasures, obviously, and you're going to come up with some estimates for the screen.
Remamping at the auditor's office.
At the auditor.
Recorder.
Sorry.
Yes, that, that's okay. I'm.
She's been called worse.
I went with the very affordable screen myself, but, um, and I guess.
Our two, our two most, our most important one is to get the screen up for the auditor's hour. So let's get a.
Recorder?
Recorder, I'm sorry.
Mine was about a hundred and forty dollars.
And it looks professional too.
It does. It looks fine.
Are we done?
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
See, you won't be gone so long the next time.
See if, see if Heather's out there.
Well, I went on vacation and forgot to fill out how my time card was, so Becky had to straighten me, straighten me out on that this morning. Thank you.
Yeah. Take a short recess again, please. We will reconvene at this time and we are joined by Heather Brezner, our GIS specialist. Good morning, Heather.
Good morning.
How, how did I do that?
Do I have to do anything on this laptop for it to?
No.
Nope.
You're good.
You're on.
All right, well, we're trying to breathe into the point because this is all kind of technical and not very exciting, but necessary to cover. So primarily, want to go over sort of what I've completed in my office since reopening a couple of months ago. So basically, when I came back, had the catch up on a couple of months, where the work primarily surveyed, we had done some survey surveys that we drafted. And it's coming while my office was closed and another ten to fifteen that were dropped off sort of last minute intention of being reported in time for, um, new tax effort. So I caught up on those, but, um, which is, drafting surveys is relatively easy, but when it's in a time crunch like that, it's a little bit hectic. But, um, with support from other offices was able to meet all those deadlines, so that was good. Then, the real thing I've been, the big thing I've been working on since is, um, restructuring our databases. So to be as, as straight and to the point and concise as possible, a couple, it was around January, we had, um, a crash with our GeoDatabases that took a couple of weeks to recover, which essentially left my office completely incapable of functioning at all for two weeks. We had gotten help from an external, one of our external vendors to restore the data, but there was never really an explanation as to why it crashed or what might have been going on in place, moving forward to ensure it wouldn't happen again. So I kind of felt like it was just a matter of time until it happened again and then noticed within the past month or so, um, data behaving similarly as it did previously right before it crashed. So I'm taking it upon my department to resolve that. Um, I can't quite explain why it doesn't other than, like anything, stuff breaks. It's not, definitely not the result of any sort of like hack or virus or anything potentially dangerous to any other data on the server. Let me make that clear. But.
What is IT's input on this?
Well, Bjorn was involved with the first data crash and he too, um, that he was unsure as to why he did it and is reliant on the vendor to restore their backup from the server. Um, we didn't provide him with any further explanation than he provided me as to why it took them two weeks to restore a backup when it should be within hours. They should be able to recover that.
I would agree if that's something we're paying for, yeah.
That, yeah, that would be.
Are we on that new cloud thing? We, we didn't do that. Okay, we couldn't.
We have to discuss the, uh, the details of his conversations with him, but what was passed on to me was that they, they generated a, a backup and didn't really generate a whole lot of explanations as to what the problem was or, like I said, any real assurance that they could avoid the problem in the future if they hadn't identified it in the first place. So my efforts to bypass that are, kind of what I have outlined here. Now, this is really just to give you something to look at so you're not following my, my mind abstractly because this isn't where you guys work in a day. But, you know, I mentioned before that GIS is two parts. We have the map, which everybody sees and everybody likes to see and then we have the data behind the map. Um, so this is a snapshot of the file tree, like we would have in Windows or anything of all our databases. Part of the problem we had on the right-hand side, these are the databases we have now. Um, so we have eleven of them for GIS data. Previously, we had three. When GeoCom originally developed our data, they didn't follow what I would consider to be best practices and kind of dump everything into one location, which is convenient when you're building it, but, um. Then when you have a problem, the problem has a potential to affect everything. So I've separated them out in accordance to. Basically what goes together, layers that are edited frequently, et cetera. Um, and expanded it into eleven different databases. So in the future, if there is a problem within one, it only affects, you know, a consolidated and confined area as opposed to everything. And this makes it easier to work in. Then also have folders for schema, which is fancy word for empty database. If something crashes in the future, part of the problem was is we were copying old databases in, um, to make new ones. Instead of just making new ones. So a schema contains all these eleven databases without any data. So it's the structure behind it, um, not the data itself. And then the backup folder, I can copy into. Every week and upload it to a remote location. So we'll never be more than a week behind on data. So in the event that there's a crash. Again, I can pull the backup layer, um, load the data into the new schema and be totally up and running without. Any problems. Um, when this had originally happened in January, I reached out to our ICIT glister as well. And there were probably a handful of other counties that had similar occurrences. And nobody really understood why it happened or had a good explanation for it. So I kind of pieced together everybody's opinions on what they thought might work. To avoid it in the future. And that's where I came up with this plan. So I'm pretty confident. If we can't avoid it, at least implemented sufficient damage control. And then just to give an idea of what's all in here, so this is really the, the meat, the videos of what I do. Is the snapshot on the left-hand side, where it says catalog stream. So that's each of these eleven databases. As each of these files within or data layers, it's either a shapefile or a table. Of all these eleven, I think we have a hundred and seventy individual data files within it. And then within of each of those a hundred and seventy, to maintain the federal standard for best data practices. Has to have a description, which is the second part of what I attached. Um, you don't necessarily have to read through extensively if you don't care to. But just to give you an idea that this much information should be behind each of these data layers, aside from the data itself. So the objective is maintaining what's considered a healthy database. Is if I fall ill and another, you know, adequately trained GIS person should be able to come in. Look at this data and instantly know where it came from, when the last time it was edited, what it's used for, what it's not used for. If there's restriction, limitations, basically anything that you would want to ask about it should be somehow embedded in a readable format. Within the data itself. So, um, this is a work in progress. I kind of triaged what I consider the most important. And most commonly used data sets and focused on them. Um, and they're pretty much ready. Ready to be implemented. And then everything else, I'll kind of work out over the coming months in between more pressing projects. So. Just wanted to give you the snapshot of it.
Okay, Heather, so my question is this, uh, you're saying, so if you set up this database like this and it's all the information. I mean, this looks logical. Maybe somebody should be able to come in, open one of these files and say, yeah, this is logical. This one was last worked on or we can see. When it was worked on. So is there someone else that is back, kind of, what I'm gonna say backing you up is Bjorn involved in this? So that, God forbid, something would happen to whoever. Can he come in here and say? Or explain it to the next person and say, this is where she was at with it and this is what's going on?
That, um.
I mean, we don't want it exclusively just to you.
Right, he would have to speak for himself in this level of, um, understanding where I'm at with it. I do know that. I store it on the Iowa GIS data repository, which he also has administrative access to. So any. Any, um, data storage or internet sites that are locked, that require administrative access to where I store everything. I ensure that he also has login credentials to work accordingly. Um, as far as his knowledge, again, he has to explain that, but I think. With it being structured the way it is, I would expect even if you didn't know, information at the drop of a hat would know where to find it.
Yeah.
Understand it accordingly.
Well, well, that's what we need. I mean, like you said, we need a, we need a backup or we need a cloud. We need whatever it's at, but we now have. We also have to have somebody else that's accessible to it or.
Right.
Understand what's going on behind the doors here.
Exactly. Well, that's part of it. It, it needs to be, um, it needs to be transferable and transparent so that another person does have that. Anytime you have just one person that holds the key, you know, if I fall down in a well, then you're on luck. So.
So the bottom line is.
In a way that that.
Right.
Even in my absence, it would still be logically accessible, minimal amount of effort.
So the bottom line is, i- is the database issue resolved? Are you finished with this? Are you still working on this? Or are we moving forward or?
Um, yes and yes. It's, I wouldn't quite say finished. I'd be, um, like I said, the most commonly used, most commonly accessed layers, which primarily tie that. Line ownership and taxation are all a hundred percent of the data. Then the other more secondary and tertiary layers that don't change as frequently. Or are accessed as commonly, um, or as extensively. I'm working through and making sure that this, that this part metadata is present. That explains what it is. All of this structure is, it's, it's present, it's backed up, it's good. So the data itself is there. The metadata is what I'm working through sort of in between other more current, you know, surveys coming that would take precedent over. Metadata on a file that's not accessed more than once a year. So it'll be work in progress until it's a hundred percent completed. Um, but then I think it'll be a, a better working model moving forward that will avoid a likely bit of.
So, like, like you said, where you're at with it now, you can keep up with things that need to be completed in a timely manner, correct?
Right, right. You know, I, the only time that I sort of put everything on hold and focused just on the data sets was the. When I started noticing odd behavior in the data, it was in the personal layer. And we really don't want that to crash. And we don't want to, we can roll back to earlier versions, but then have to make, there's a lot of effort that has to quickly put forth to make sure. Nothing is lost in the time period between when it crashed and we rolled back to. So when that started behaving oddly, I kind of focused on. Maintaining that, maintaining nine-one-one data, um, getting everything there where it needed to be and all the rest is just sort of, as time allows. Continue to get it to the point that it, that I think it should be at, which is in alignment with what goes together. And then, once it's done, it's done. It's just a matter of reasoning. Sort of the data behind the data.
Okay, so is there any questions for Heather?
Sounds like, I mean, we're getting where we need.
I like the idea that it's that they're separated. Of course, you know, they're different from cemetery's ATV routes. Yeah, that's. I mean, you don't want a big bundle, but again, I'd like to have somebody else have accessible, you know, and knowledge.
Currently, these are all stored on our server.
Anybody can access it. Public, public record, public knowledge, right?
Yeah, this is all stuff that the public requests information from.
Okay. Anything else for Heather?
Um, do you have anything on here on water trails?
None of the explicit water trails. Um, in developing our water layer more as like a, for a planometric. Map view without aerials, trying to keep in mind the actual.
Okay, we're doing some trail work. I mean, Makoga River Trail.
Yeah.
And we're supposed to talk about it at our meeting on last Tuesday, but that got canceled. So they're gonna redo a bunch of the boat docks and canoe accesses. And that's all coming through too. So at some point in time, I'll throw you into the loop. Or get you in contact with who's designing that. There's somebody that wants to design that stuff.
Yeah, I think I have most, if not all, of the, of the launches, canoe access, the dam, everything that. All of the features along the river trail. Um, I just don't have it separated out explicitly as this is the river trail.
Okay.
Or, um.
And sometime, I think in, sometime in August, we have. A group of, um, college students coming to do some work on that. And part of that's gonna be tied in with GIS. So I don't know a whole lot about that yet, but it's coming. And I'll try to get you to maybe talk to them too. And maybe work with them. They'll be here for like a week, I think.
Things like river distance between features would be something good.
And campsites along.
Right, something that would have to be ground truth and that can measure the distance.
So I think what they're working on is an app that you can pull up on your phone when you get, when you put in, that's gonna show you all that stuff. So, yeah.
Great, yeah, if I can give any help on a lot of these data that they might benefit from incorporating.
I know Kevin Coolman's been doing the canoe thing on here. He's been running over four hundred people a weekend on the river. And he says it's just. So that's exciting to get that many more.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you, Heather. All right. Any other, we don't have any work sessions scheduled, correct? Any other unfinished business or new business?
Last night, we had the Iowa Works Board meeting and CEO meeting and. I guess they're gonna be having a training session for everybody on the twenty-fourth of, um. August, um, from one to five. Supposedly it is going to be face-to-face. They have a big enough space that. We can social distance and, um, it'll be the first time that we've met face-to-face. So I don't know.
When, when you say everybody, you say not everybody?
No, the board and the CEOs. And, uh, it's gonna be held in musketeen and, um. Have to miss it. Either that or I'll talk to, um, uh, her and we'll change it for a different day. But, um. Got a lot accomplished yesterday. Um, re- revamped the, um. The, uh, twenty-eight E and talked about the fiscal agent and. Got that all worked out. And it'll also be good for the training session. The fiscal agent, um, is going to be there. So we'll get to meet him and then see where they progressed. And, um, we did get some additional money. They figure that at the end of, uh, the fiscal year, they won't close the books out and it won't be finalized till. I think it's September seventeenth, but it looks right now like the, I'm, I'm sure part of it's because of the COVID. But they're, they're anticipating seven hundred thousand dollars in carryover money. That will go to the different programs. So.
Well, yeah, what the, did I see five hundred distributed to the regions and? Did I see how they were dividing that out or something somewhere?
Yeah, you probably did.
Yeah. But.
But I, you know, going back to our conversation earlier, I think that we need to try to set up a time. To discuss the Welcome Center.
I agree.
So let me see if we can get Tom on a work session here one of these first weeks. Yes.
And I think whoever's the head of the Tourism Association should be here too. I don't agree that.
Well, Eastern Iowa was Carrie, but a whole Eastern Iowa.
I mean, just. So I don't know who the.
The EITA, the Eastern Iowa Tourism, we haven't appointed anyone.
I, are you not sure that Tom?
I think Tom might be, but I'm not sure.
Didn't follow, keep follow up with that? Didn't he stay involved with that, some of that?
Who, Daryl?
Yeah.
I don't have any idea.
I thought he was still on the tourism board.
Stayed on for a little while until he gets replaced, but I don't know.
Well, talk to Tom about it. He'll know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know who their chairman is. But I really think that we need to sit down and work with that and discuss.
There's maintenance that needs to be done. There's just, we need to make a decision.
So.
People are stopping there. Should it be open? That's some.
Well, we need some building maintenance done inside and outside. Of course, we still have the lingering issue of the mowing and. So yes, we need to have a discussion as far as what's.
We need to discuss all that with Tom.
Yeah.
So also, do we, are we planning on setting up a work session to discuss this a little bit?
We can certainly do that if you wanna, if the agenda's light next week, we can certainly do that or.
Or we can do it a different day. I, it doesn't matter to me. I, I mean, if somebody's free. An hour, a couple hours, an hour and a half or whatever, if we did.
Well, if the agenda for next week doesn't change, the last thing is at nine fifty, except for Ben at ten and board commission reports.
And we certainly don't have to do it all in one day like we do our budget, but I think we should discuss some of it.
I agree.
You can almost set up as a regular recurring, ten fifteen minute session after every meeting.
I mean, once you start getting into it, I mean, I, I've got actually some highlights and some questions that I wrote down. So I think that makes it go quicker if, if we're prepared to discuss it.
And if you want the department heads here, then let me know so I can make sure they're invited.
I think at first we need to just go through it ourselves.
Absolutely.
So.
And, um, I guess we talked briefly last week about the spring crushes or a couple of weeks ago about the spring crushes. And I did look over the. Emails that you sent of what we had when the last test, looked like the last inspection was done in January of twenty twenty. Way it looked to me, anyway. So I don't know. I may just call Matt and see where he's at with that, where we need to proceed with that.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
And I also, with getting back to our Makoka dumpster.
Oh, yeah.
Since they bought the, uh, Heiko building, could we at least talk to, um, get heard about.
I think that'd be a great place to have it.
Putting, uh, a, a place out there for people to take their recycling.
I have talked to him.
And what did he say?
And he said that's, that would probably work, but he'd have to order another dumpster. So it's gonna take a couple of months or something.
That's fine. I, I think.
But again, do, until we know that what we budgeted for, do we have enough in the budget to accommodate another cost of a debt?
Well, we might have to make an adjustment.
Would that be a little bit less costly because it's right there instead they go now to.
No, but they, so they're gonna take it and dump it. Yeah, and, yeah, I don't know.
I, I think we base our budget on what historically had been happening when.
And we don't know what our, what our pickups are right now.
The one thing that I think we do need to talk about, and I do have a picture on my phone because we get recycle on Sunday. We still do have blue signs out there. Um, I recycle at Iron Hill. And it says if there's any issues to call, to call back. And it has a phone number and it says, so we need somebody.
New signs.
To take those signs down.
Okay. Well, do we need to order and have Mike order us new signs from the.
There should be some information on there.
They're not that expensive. I would order these signs.
And I will talk to, I will talk to Scott also about that. I don't know if he would have anything for signage, but. That's, that would be generic as far as.
Yeah, cause on the face of the bin itself, it says what they will take.
Yeah, yeah. And he's got a nice description on there. And then I'll also see if I can get a cost for that.
Who should take those, I call them the blue signs down. If that's something that we could talk to.
Secondary roads?
Secondary roads, just tell them to pull them out.
We have a, we have a sign.
Sign man.
Sign man.
If we're gonna replace them, leave the post there.
Yeah, we'll leave the post there in case we put something else back up. Maybe talk to Mike about that. We can have him come over right now if he wants, if he's, if that's something they can do or not. Otherwise, let's get somebody else.
Yeah.
I would guess it should work out. Yeah, and I, and I stopped at the building and they were taking the mesamine out above in the Heiko building and. He was actually there himself. Yeah, they need the heights and they were down and dirty. Oh, yeah. They were down and dirty. They're torching them out and they're, yeah, there you go. But, uh, they need the height and we talked about putting the bin outside there and I. He was busy, so I elaborate, but I'll call him. He could be down there today. We can talk to him. Anything else before the board today?
I move adjourned.
Second. Second.
Have a motion to second adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried, meeting adjourned, thank you all.